Good evening and welcome to our January 11th, 2022 Borough Council meeting. Tonight, we're conducting our monthly Borough Council meeting virtually using the Zoom webinar platform. We're glad that you've joined us for this meeting tonight. Participants virtually attending tonight's meeting can provide public participation during the public comment periods. We have a public comment period at the beginning and one towards the end. During these portions of the agenda, please raise your hand and our staff will unmute you and and call your name to you're able to speak and provide public comment. With that, we're going to start our meeting and thank you for joining us. We will now begin with pledge allegiance and moment of silence. And with that, we'll start with roll call, Mr. Manager.
Ms. Berkeley. Mr. Carbonito.
Present.
Ms. Dugan. Mr. Kirkner.
Here.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Soto. Mr. Weiss. Mr. Ewald.
Here.
Mr. Mayor.
Here.
Manager's here, assistant's here, chief is here, solicitor's here, you have a quorum, sir.
Thank you. We do have quorum in the room and Ms. Berkeley virtually. With that, we have two sets of meeting minutes to approve tonight. This should be in two separate motions since we had the reorganization. I know there were some modifications to the minutes since the packet came out. Is there any other additions, corrections, or amendments to the last two meeting minutes? That of December 14th, 2021 and January 3rd, 2022. Seeing none, what is council's pleasure?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes of the December 14th, 2021 regular meeting of council.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kirkner, second by Mr. Moore. Questions on the motion, seeing none, all those in favor. Opposed, motion carries six zero. And for the January 3rd reorganization meeting minutes, what is council's pleasure?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the January 3rd, 2022 reorganization meeting minutes.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Moore, questions on the motion. Seeing none, all those in favor.
Hi.
Opposed. Motion carries six zero. With that, we do not have any presentations tonight, so that leads us to our first round of public participation. Any members of the public wishing to make public comments tonight or address council, please raise your hand digitally. A member of our staff will then call on you and you're allow you to be unmuted and participate. When doing so, please state your name and address.
Ms. Fox, I've turned on your microphone. Ms. Fox, I've turned on your microphone, you can go ahead.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. So yes, my name is Emmeline and I'm resident here in the borough and I'm speaking on behalf of the Phoenixville Green Team and Phoenixville Area Transition. And I believe you already received an email in the past week that brought to your attention the poll that we created for area residents to make views known in regards to the kindergarten center. And our goal is remain fully transparent and explore the sales potential and impact fairly in our questions. So we did share the this fact that we have this poll with the school board as well. And are asking them to communicate with us about their process. But yeah, their goal is to provide information for both you all as the Borough Council as well as the school district. And we currently, as of last night, have 491 responses. It's been circulating since early December. And we plan to keep the poll open for another few weeks or so, so that we can share like final results hopefully by the next round of meetings. And just a little quick overview of what the preliminary results have been so far. About 90, you know, 94% are opposed to the sale of the property to a high density developer. When asked about the idea of accepting the offer from a developer because of bringing needed revenue for the district, 92% disagree. The biggest concern if it gets sold to a developer is loss of woods and increase in traffic. 89% would like it to remain as public property and not sold to a private entity. 89% would like to see a learning center as proposed by the borough to be used to benefit school district students. 93% like the idea of having a trail connecting to the Schuylkill River Trail and the Phoenixville Greenway in the center of town. And there's, you know, various ideas of what you all as the borough could do with the property that enjoy a wide support from the public. The support of these ideas range from a low of 75%, that's for keeping the playing fields, to a high of 91%, which is in favor of a community garden and food education center. So there's lots of good information in there. Again, we want to be fully transparent and would share any information you want to know from the poll. And yeah, and if anybody wants to participate who's listening or you all as council members, you can do so anonymously at and that link is at the phoenixvillgreenteam.org. So I think that is all, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. DeVal, I've unmuted your microphone.
Terrific. Hi, my name is Chris DeVal. I live in the borough of Phoenixville at 446 Grant Street. And I just wanted to echo Emmeline's comments that she shared with you and applaud the the great work that the the Phoenixville Green Team has done and the transition team. And both of us spoke last night at the the school board meeting. And share the same letter that I'm hoping that you all have, but the the opportunity that the borough has in acquiring this property really is a truly amazing, almost once in a lifetime opportunity to be able to to connect that green space with the Arts and Entertainment District of downtown Phoenixville, which as you know rests upon the beautiful French Creek and Schuylkill River and all the trails that that come through town. And I truly hope that you will continue to to find a way to to work with the school board to to make, you know, this happen. Please realize that that their their mission statement is really different somewhat than yours and that it's on educating the children that they have within the district, which encompasses not only the borough of Phoenixville, but also the surrounding townships. And like any public school district, they have their own budgetary pressures that as a success of Phoenixville has continued with many, many more families moving into town. It's creating more and more and more costs that the school district as a board needs needs to deal with. At one time, the borough actually had the opportunity to eminent domain the entire steel site, which never happened, but as you can see what's there now. It certainly produced a lot of families and children that accentuated the problems of what the school district needs to deal with. And there's so many ways for for both the the school district and for the borough to partner on this property rather than just allow a developer to put as many units as possible there. And I really hope that both boards can continue to work proactively to increase the amazing trail system, which now everybody is really truly coming to enjoy. And to also put a little plug in for extending the trail from downtown Phoenixville up along the western side of the Schuylkill River up to Black Rock Dam, that trail exists, many people use it, myself and many, many others, and I really hope that someday it becomes a true official trail along with the land that's there on the river that would be an amazing park for the borough. And there's so many ways to partner with with the county and even on a regional basis to make that happen. And my guess is some of them are in the works and I know that Norfolk Southern is there. But the reality is you have an easy way to get to it through the tunnel that's there and to have this extra case along with amazing stuff that you're doing there with the sewer plant and the school would be great. And thank you very much for the time and I applaud you all for all you've done to make Phoenix with a wonderful town that it is. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Mr. Ewald, at this time, there's no additional hands raised.
Thank you. We do have another round of public participation later on in the agenda, so if anybody was missed this round, we will have that later on tonight. With that, we'll close this round of public participation and open up our communications and council participation. Any members of council wishing to make any comments or bring any information to to the board? Mr. Kirkner.
Yes, Mr. President, everyone, thank you. I want to acknowledge the passing of of an individual who used to sit on this body and sat in the chair that you now hold, Mr. President. My neighbor Joseph A. Fabian, he died last Thursday, January 6th at the age of 98. And I knew, I I knew Mr. Fabian for more than 40 years since when I first came to Phoenixville many years ago, he was president of Borough Council at that time. He served on council for 20 years altogether and was president for 10 years. And president through some very difficult times for this borough and he he got the borough through that. And there were some episodes of corruption back in the 1970s and when he left in the early 80s, he I I feel he left the borough a better place than it was when he found it. When I look at the Gay Street School, I think of of him, because many years ago, the person who bought that building talked about demolishing the Gay Street School, if you can get your head around that. And I was a reporter and I called Mr. Fabian for a comment about that. And he said simply to me, nobody's going to tear down the Gay Street School. That was his comment. And it's still there today, 40 or so years later. He, he always served, and I I saw him conduct many council meetings. Grace, dignity, measured tone. And at that time, there were 12 council persons, if you can imagine, so. And he handled it, a job he handled with aplomb. I I I'm sure we all want to express our condolences to his son Andy, who was our former water plant superintendent and his other son Robert as well, the visiting, their visiting hours Friday morning at St. Mary of the Assumption Parish over on the north side, but I I I will miss his smile for sure and his vote. So thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Rich. Any other communications or council participation tonight? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Rischler with our mayor's report.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Thank you all so much for being here with us tonight and those of you who are joining us virtually. Certainly not much to report the second meeting of this month, so just happy to tell you, I can go on a little longer if you'd like. Just happy to tell you that, you know, we are starting to see some events coming back in person in a very measured and careful way. There is a Taste of Phoenixville on January 20th. If you go to Good Samaritan, it's for it benefits Good Samaritan Services and go to tastefenixville.com and you'll be able to purchase tickets there and find out more information. That's next Thursday. Thank you all so much, Happy New Year to everyone, and we look forward to all the excitement that 2022 has for us. Thank you.
Thank you for your brief report. With that, our next item for tonight's consideration under appointments and public resolutions. We do, I don't believe we have any openings at the moment on our boards and commissions or committees. However, if you're interested in volunteering for any of our boards and committees, we do keep an updated list on the borough website. And feel free to reach out to your Borough Council representative about applying for any of our future vacancies. We do have four applica- three applications to consider tonight. And what is council's pleasure for the three recommendations coming out of police personnel and public safety?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to appoint Vincent Trevani to the Beautification Advisory Commission for an unexpired term. I'm sorry, I'm clicking as I'm doing this, thank you for your patience, for an unexpired term. Expiring October 31st, 2022, and that did come from Committee 3-0.
Second that, Mr. President. A motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Kirkner, questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed. Motion carries six zero, welcome aboard, Vincent.
Mr. President, I'll also make a motion to reappoint Ethan Palacostro to the Civil Service Commission for a new term expiring January 31st, 2028, and that came through Committee 3-0.
A motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Moore, 2028 seems very far away, so I'm glad he's committing to that long of a term. Any questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed, motion carries six zero.
And we have another reappointment. I would like to make a motion to reappoint Teresa Nowory to the zoning hearing board for a new term expiring January 31st, 2027, recommended in Committee 3-0.
I'll second that, Mr. President. Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Kirkner, questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor.
Hi.
Opposed. Motion carries six zero and then that same motion, we need to adopt a resolution since it's zoning hearing.
That is correct, Mr. President, so moved.
Second, motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Kirkner, questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor.
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed. Motion carries six zero. With that, we'll move on to new business. Tonight, we do have a bond reissuing question, so, Mr. Manager, if you can give us a brief background since it's not our everyday new business?
This is not, this is in regard to the, I'm gonna take this off, this is in regard to the 2012 bond. That bond provided the 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 funding necessary to build this building that we're in and it also restructured some debt with the water treatment plant and the wastewater treatment plant. We are looking at refinancing approximately a total of $11 million. The good thing is that the interest rates are in our favor. The second good thing is that it will not move any of the target dates, so the expirations of the water and the water and wastewater will still expire about five years from now. They'll be paid off in that timeframe and then the the existing bond continues out until it's a regular time. We are estimating, based on our discussion with Standard and Poor's yesterday with our financial services folks, we're estimating over the life of the loan, a total savings of a little north of $1 million that'll come back in, not as a lump sum, obviously with the passage of this, but it comes back over not having to pay the same amount that we're paying now. And then, of course, as we as we've reduced that debt and that obviously makes it a lot easier to pay the the water off, we have approximately 800,000 left on water, so I anticipate that we may be able to pay that off even sooner. But that's the essence of this is tonight is to schedule and advertise the needed ordinance to put into place. With that, if you so move it forward, we will target the auction of the the bonds the morning of February 8th. And then you'll have that information available to you that night at your council meeting where you would wind up doing this ordinance, but also accepting the the results of the auction. And if I missed anything, Mr. Solicitor.
I don't believe you missed anything. I I would add that the borough has engaged bond counsel to specifically assist the borough in preparing this ordinance and pursuing the bond refinance. And my office is providing some limited assistance as well. And those of you who met Mr. Fremeth in December, he is the attorney, particularly in my office, who is handling that.
To begin discussion, I guess, can we have a motion to schedule and advertise?
So moved.
Second, a motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Kirkner, schedule and advertise an ordinance to authorize the the debt reissuing. With that, is there further discussion, further questions on this topic? Pretty straightforward for me. Nope, okay. All those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed. Motion carries six zero. Got that bond auction scheduled. Always exciting to watch those.
For, I I know most of council knows this, but for Mr. Carbonito, we at the time that we have the auction, we'll get a link and we'll give that to all of the council members. So from wherever you're at, you can you can link in. It's about a 15 minute timeframe. And you wait for 13 minutes in anticipation and then the last two minutes, all heck breaks loose. So that's typically the way it works and they can extend it. I think our last one, they extended the time two or three times. The 2012 bond, which we're refinancing, I think they extended it six times. So it's, it gets exciting in the last minute, minute and a half timeframe.
Just a quick question, do you know what the current interest rate on that?
It is a moving target as of yesterday. It did move a little north, it moved, I think it was one to two basis, 10 to 20 basis points. But right now, we're obviously, we we still got a month away, so I'd hate to put a oh, I don't have it off the top of my head unless Ms. Lubinski has it, she's in the the audience. If she's, she has it and can come back maybe before we get to other parts of the business, so she can either text me and I'll let you know or she can, we can wait.
Great. Yeah. Okay, without move, move on to resolutions. We have two resolutions tonight, we have our Borough Bank accounts and we have our round 34 of the municipal grant program application for the county. What is council's pleasure for these resolutions?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion, a resolution by the Council of Borough Phoenixville authorizing signatures for Borough Bank accounts.
Second. Questions on the motion? We have a motion by Mr. Moore, second by Mr. Kirkner.
Yes, and I believe a resolution was made. Not a motion. Correct.
Second or, okay.
I agree with the amendment.
We have a proposal to adopt a resolution made and seconded. Got questions on the motion for our bank Borough Bank accounts? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed. Motion carries six zero. And for round 34 municipal grant program is application. Can I have a motion that we'll have discussion on this one?
I'll make a motion that we we approve a resolution authorizing submission of a round 34 municipal grant application to Chester County.
Second.
I I would amend the motion to be an adoption of the resolution.
Okay. I've moved that we adopt a resolution authorizing the submission of a round 34 municipal grant application to Chester County.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kirkner, second by Ms. Berkeley. With that, Ms. Getzfried, if you want to give us some background on round 34.
Sure, so it's a county planning slash Parks and Rec grant. We actually put money aside as a capital project for the Reeves Park sidewalks. But when we did that, we also talked about trying to find funding to help offset those costs. We've about 150,000 set aside as a capital project. This would allow us to take about 25 to 30% off of that in these county funds. That's what we're going to do. Any other questions?
No. Thank you, Kell. And with that, what is council's, call the vote, all those in favor?
Hi.
Opposed. Motion carries six zero. We moved through the agenda just a little bit quick, so we actually have a few minutes since the public hearing is scheduled for 7:30 PM. We've, this has never happened to us.
Would you like me to speak a little longer?
So with that, we'll come back to the public hearing and we can move through reports of committees, boards, and commissions. So we will first go to Mr. Moore with anything from Planning Commission.
No action to report, the last meeting was in December that, so our last get together as council. Mr. Ewald was actually kind enough to represent me that 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 meeting, but no action to consider. Our next planning commission meeting is Thursday, this Thursday, the 13th at 6:00.
Thank you, Brian. Ms. Dugan with HARB?
There hasn't been a meeting yet this year, so we have another meeting coming up on, what was the date here? February 2nd.
Right, thank you. Mr. Kirkner with Regional Planning Committee.
Yeah, ditto for regional planning, no meeting yet this year, next meeting is January 26th.
Great. Ms. Dugan with Rec Board?
I actually have stuff to report here. There are some programs that are starting and some of these are soon and some of them are a little further into the spring, so I'll start listing, the Gingerbread House registration is open for the 22, 23 year. There is the, there's also Snapology. We've got a couple different kinds like this, there's the junior engineers from four to from four to seven year olds at the Civic Center and that's on from January to March from 4:30 to 5:30, January 18th it starts. The other one like that is combat robots for the little bit older for that, that's seven to 14. And that's competitive building. Then there's the family physical education, it's a 60 minute whole, all fun for the whole family thing that you go to Patton-Adel Field and there's plenty of fun to be had there. That's on January 23rd, February 6th, February 20th so far at Patton-Adel Field. Then there is the jump start T-ball. That's also at Patton-Adel Field, that won't be starting until April 9th, but you can start getting into the registration for that one. And there's also soccer shots at weekdays on Tuesday at Patton-Adel Field from, there's mini classic and premiere. This whole thing is also on the Borough website, so you can figure out where you fit in and which one you would want to sign up for, but that starts in March. March 29th specifically, there's a Saturday program for the same thing, but that starts March 26th. And there's a Sunday one that starts on the 27th of March. And that's actually all I have this month.
Great, thank you, Dana. BAC did not meet last night, so there's no report out of BAC. Ms. Berkeley with TAC, Tree Advisory Commission.
So Tree Advisory Commission did meet last night, we had a full update from our arborist. They were able to re-enter and tag all the newly planted fall planting trees, so a finished report will be up to the tech committee by Friday, Mike said. John also has a document that he's sharing with him, John Rizzo, our chair of the Tree Advisory Commission that he's sharing with Mike, so they'll be collaborating to finalize that report. The committee is also working on a mission statement as we go forward with updating our ordinance document. And we talked a little bit about some of the details of that last night as well as As well as getting together, we want to have two dates, so if anyone is interested, Mary Foot so graciously has been controlling the emails, but if you email tac@phoenixville.org, if you're interested in any of the two pruning volunteer days, she is looking to do two of those in February. So please email her. Our next meeting will be on Valentine's Day, so that's Monday, February fourteenth.
Okay, thank you Beth. Okay, and with that, that gets us past our advertised hour for the public hearing. So it is seven thirty two, so I'll need a motion to open a public hearing.
Mr. President, I would add to your motion that the public meeting shall go in recess.
Okay, well, we'll need a motion to open a public hearing while the public meeting goes into recess. Second, okay, motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Kirchner. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries six zero. With that, we'll be going into a public hearing and I'll turn it over to Mr. Denlinger.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, the, we are here for a hearing. Borough Code Enforcement Department has determined that the structure located at eight hundred Bridge Street in the Borough of Phoenixville, Chester County, Pennsylvania, being UPI number fifteen dash twelve dash two three four, constitutes a public nuisance pursuant to the Phoenixville Borough Abatable Structure Ordinance found in Chapter Two Buildings, Part Four Abatable Structures of the Borough Ordinances. Consistent with the Abatable Structure Ordinance, this here, hearing is being held before Borough Council in order for Borough Council to determine whether any action shall be authorized to be taken by the Borough related to the structure on eight hundred Bridge Street, which may include, without limitation, the repair, stabilization, fencing, removal or demolition of the structure in order to protect the health, safety and public welfare of the community for which the Borough shall be able to recover the cost thereof from the landowner. After the record of this hearing is closed, Borough Council shall have at least thirty days to consider the evidence presented tonight. Or if this hearing is continued until the record is closed, and vote on a decision and render a formal written opinion at a subsequent public meeting. The procedure we will follow this evening will be as such. We have a court reporter here tonight who will be taking a transcript. So only one person will be allowed to speak at a time. The department has what's called the burden of proof, meaning that the department has to go first and present whatever evidence they choose to prove their case. When the department rests, then any party who supports or opposes the application will be allowed to present witnesses if they so choose. Witnesses or evidence, that is. And let me just quickly explain party status. First of all, party status is optional. A party is someone who could be impacted positively or negatively by this application more specifically than members of the general public. So they have to have a, a specific harm or benefit that they are experiencing. The landowner in this matter is automatically granted party status. And any other person wishing to be a party must be able to demonstrate that that, they have that particular interest that is beyond that of the general public. Any person requesting party status will be required to provide their full name, address and describe the previously explained information. A party is allowed to cross-examine witnesses and participate in the hearing. Once the department and the parties present their evidence, Borough Council will then have the time to consider the evidence and vote on their determination of the hearing. With that being said, do we have the landowner here or is anyone requesting party status? No, is the landowner here? Okay. Okay, we're just going to hold on. Okay. Seeing none, I will mark the following exhibits into the record on the behalf of the Borough. B one shall be the abatable structure notice from the Borough Director of Code Enforcement dated December two, twenty twenty one. Borough two will be the affidavit of mailing notice. Borough three will be the certificate of delivery receipt. Borough four will be the affidavit of electronic mail delivery of notice. Borough five will be the affidavit of posting with photograph exhibits. Borough six will be the abatable structure notice of hearing. Borough seven will be the legal notice of hearing. And Borough eight will be the proof of publication of notice from the Mercury, verifying that tonight's hearing was advertised on December twenty seventh, twenty twenty one. I believe that Mr. Barley is here on the behalf of the department and I would call at this time on the Code Enforcement Department to present its case.
Good evening. Good evening, members of council. Going to make this short, so the first picture in front of you is D one, that's the department one. It's one page. It simply states that there was a fire at eight hundred West Bridge Street and the premente did indeed burn. Flip over the page. You're going to come to department two, which is eleven pages. These eleven pages represent nothing more or less than the police department being called to the scene multiple times for either defiant trespass, criminal trespass, or any other type of wrongdoing, showing that the building has never been properly secured for the safety of the public. D three is three pages long. And it represents the current state that the building is in at this time. So there's three pictures. And you can see, it is not a good situation. D four is five pages long. And it starts out with an email. It goes back and forth between the defendant, Raoul Patel and Mike Rouse, the applicant, so building application or an application to demolish the building was made. And it was signed and dated ten twenty one twenty one. That was then answered to by Barry Izette, the Borough's third party on November fourth. And outlines the conditions in which the defendant must come up with, there are six of them, to provide to adequately secure a permit to demolish the building. The applicant has never responded to any of the questions or statements by Barry Izette Associate, again, the Borough's third party building code official. And D five is our final. And that's exactly what the structure looks like this very day or yesterday. I thank you very much. If there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions from the board?
Oh, I'm sorry. Michael. Or?
Any questions from Borough Council?
So last time we had communication with the, with landowner was in November?
November. Regarding the application for demolition.
And then have we tried to reach the applicant or the property owner by any other means? Have we been, you know, have there been phone calls or other attempts to approach?
Yes, I have personally spoken with the owner on a few occasions regarding it. He keeps assuring me that they're trying to get everything put together for the completion of the permit application. Yet, as I said to Sonny, why is there no communication with Barry Izette Associates? There are six items that need to be addressed. Why don't address each of the items?
Unless anybody else has questions, I'll just keep going. Okay, just for the sake of clarity, can you give us, can you go through the six items that Barry Iset was requesting? I know they're pretty straightforward, but I just want to.
Please provide information as to how the site is going to be secured during the demolition, e.g. fencing. Two, please provide demolition plan and demolition schedule as required by the IBC, section thirty three oh three point one. Three, please provide documentation from PICO that the electric and gas, if applicable, has been disconnected to their satisfaction. Four, please provide documentation from the Phoenixville Borough Waste Water Treatment Plant or Department that the sewer connection has, have been disconnected to their satisfaction. Five, please provide documentation from the Phoenixville Borough Water Distribution, the water department that the water connection has been disconnected to their satisfaction. Six, please provide a copy of your DEP asbestos abatement and demolition notification form. Should you have any questions, you may contact Mr. Harry Weaver. Now, I can tell you that the water has been cut. The electric and utilities have been cut. Sewer has not. Sewer is still intact at this time.
I just have one, one question. So when was the last time you spoke to the property owner? Was it the twenty ninth?
When? I would have to say it was the end of, end of December.
So you've had phone communication back and forth with the property owner since November?
Sir, you will be provided an opportunity to cross-examine.
I did speak, I did speak to him the day of the affidavit of delivery. Spoke to him on the phone. Because it was delivered electronically and we did talk on the phone. So the day of the affidavit that Mr. Denlinger has is the last communication I had directly with the defendant.
Any other questions from Borough Council?
I, I have a question concerning the, the police reports and the currently unsecured status of the building. Is, is that one of the violations that they're currently subject to? I mean, is the fact that the building that we have repeated, is that something that, that codes enforces or not? I'm a little unclear on that.
So you're asking if, if, if after the incident, is the facility required to be secured? I think is, is that's what you're asking?
Yeah.
The answer to that is yes. Every time we've gotten a police report, Chief Marshall's notified me that there's been a problem. Sonny has been called and the original team that boarded up the unit, as you can see in the photographs, have come back out, tried to re-board, re-secure.
Yes, if I may. Ju- just for, just, just for the record, when did the fire occur at this property?
I believe it was March sixteenth.
Of twenty twenty one?
Twenty twenty one.
It just seems like it's been like that for a lot longer.
It has seemed like forever.
To my, okay, and, and with regard to let's see, this is D four. The fourth page of that is an email from Michael Rose dated November twenty ninth. In which he replies, I will get this information to you, dated November twenty ninth, in which he replies to an email sent by Harry Weaver of Barry Izette, sent on November fourth, so this is twenty five days after that.
Yes.
I will get this information to you, the six points that you just elucidated previously. Has has there been any of this information that he brought to you?
No.
Okay. So there's, there's been no, no communication with regard to these six points since the email November twenty ninth?
Correct.
Okay.
Have you had conversation with Michael Rose of Impact Disaster Services? Or have you only communicated with the property owner?
I only communicate with the property owner.
Okay, so Michael Rose would have to be communicating with Barry Izette?
Directly, yes. As indicated in the email.
Any further questions from Borough Council? Okay, I have a few questions. Exhibit marked D one is two photographs that show the subject's structure on fire. How did you obtain these photographs? Okay, just, if.
I believe they were obtained from Brian Marshall, from the police department.
Okay.
To the best of my knowledge.
Now exhibit D two. You noted these are incident reports from the subject property, is that correct?
That is correct.
And are these being presented because you believe this demonstrates that the structure is an attractive nuisance?
That is correct.
Turning to exhibit D three. It's three pages and shows the structure boarded up. In your opinion, is the state of this structure dangerous and hazardous to the public safety?
Yes, sir.
And is it likely to cause accidents or potentially death to people trespassing?
Yes, sir.
And is this property currently in violation of the Borough Property Maintenance Regulations?
It is, sir.
You mentioned earlier that there was a company that was boarding up the property. Who, or if you know, who arranged for that to happen?
The owner and the owner's insurance company.
Okay. I have nothing further. Do we at this time have any members? we at this time have any members of the public who wish to become parties? Okay. Seeing none? Uh do you have any other witnesses?
No, sir.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Uh before, excuse me, before you uh step away, would would you like to move your exhibits, D one through D five into the record?
Yes, I would, sir.
Okay, so moved. And having seen no further request to make comments, uh I enter Borough Exhibits B one through B eight into the record as well. And I would entertain a motion to close the hearing.
Well, uh we have a motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Kirchner to close the public hearing. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries six zero. So we are now closing that public hearing and resuming our public meeting.
I would entertain a motion to uh resume the public meeting?
So move. Motion by Ms. Kirchner, second by Mr. Carmenito. Questions on the motion to resume the public meeting? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries six zero. Our meeting has now resumed.
Uh and before we move on, I would just note uh that council will take the matter that was just heard in the hearing under advisement and make a decision uh at a future public meeting, uh and its decision will be accompanied by a written opinion.
Uh what is the timeline that we have for making that opinion?
It cannot be made any sooner than thirty days.
Okay, thank you. So the soonest public meeting that we could make a render a decision would be our March meeting?
That's correct. Um and I would add um for Borough Council's information, because you are operating in a quasi-judicial manner, uh the deliberation on this matter can ha- occur in executive session.
Okay, any other questions on this matter? Seeing none, we will uh resume with our agenda where we picked off, where we left off. Uh actually, Mr. Crack?
Just for uh from Mr. Moore, uh you had asked a question about the the bond, uh and currently uh we are through years eleven to uh uh November twenty-two through uh November thirty-seven, we're at a blended rate at three point four-three. And right now, we're looking at two percent uh with cost of issuance and everything in- included, so.
Oh, right. Okay, thank you.
It's a good number. Okay, with that, we can now resume uh our agenda with uh item thirteen of the agenda, which is council action referred from council committees. We'll start with Ms. Berkeley of uh Police and Public uh Police Personnel and Public Safety. Ms. Berkeley.
Thank you. Um and of course, I clicked on where I needed to be and I clicked right off of it as I clicked back onto the meeting. My apologies. Um, okay, so I would like to make a motion recommending Borough Council authorize the Civil Service Commission to provide an updated el- eligibility list for patrolmen recommended in Committee three zero.
With motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Moore. I know this this is a list that we had recently done, but uh we actually went through it quite quickly, so I'm glad to see we're refreshing it right away. Uh any questions on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries six zero. Uh and back to you, Beth.
Yes, um I'll also make a motion and I'm glad that we um have our new fire chief with us because he will be able to give a little background, but I will make the motion to get us started. So I will make a motion to authorize the submission of the staffing for adequate fire emergency response or safer grant for additional full-time firefighters, and that was recommended in Committee three zero.
Second?
With motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Carmenito. Uh with that, we'll try to get some background information from our new fire chief in Resunus if you're available.
Thank you. Um. Yeah, so i- in a nutshell, Safer's doing a few things for us here in the borough, uh helping to provide adequate staffing around the clock. That's one of the primary goals. It's helping us to meet National Fire Protection Association standards for response. It turns a number of personnel arriving at the scene of emergency, especially those that are structured fire-related. And overall, it's improving our overall safety for uh our personnel uh responding both paid and volunteer uh in the Phoenixville community. Really, what we're looking for uh is to get approval to apply for this grant. It's highly competitive. It's a three-year grant. Uh the one thing it's unique about the program over the last couple of years due to the pandemic is the fact there's no local cost match associated with the grant. So, for example, if we were to apply for, you know, four or six full-time employees, uh their salary, their benefits will be covered for a three-year period, a hundred percent. Um there's some costs that are not aren't covered, which would be training. Uh there's unusual overtime that's not planned within the set schedule that's provided. Uh that's not eligible. Um but, you know, virtually just about the whole freight of those employees that hopefully will be awarded is covered for the three-year period. At the conclusion of three-year period, it would be up to us, the borough, to fund those positions at a one-hundred percent uh move forward in year four. Um so there's different ways you can do it. You can decide to do some ramping, uh to put money away so you're ready for year four, uh where you could decide to wait. Um and just say, we're just gonna fund it a hundred percent in year four, just keep rolling from there. Uh so there's different ways of attacking, and that's obviously a decision for you as a decision-makers to make. Uh but only uh the goal, the other big goal here internally is the fact that we have two full-time employees with the fire department, and there's currently twenty-eight uh part-time employees. Uh while we're not eliminating the part-time element of a response model, uh being able to have uh some more full-time staff on duty provides for more consistent scheduling, helps controls, oh help helps control overtime. Uh and we get uh folks way frankly to get more vested uh in the community as well as, you know, being employees uh with the fire department. Um, you know, my experience is with the borough in Radnor, uh our scheduling and our overall system management has gotten a lot easier, adding an all-boarding strategically, uh some more full-time staff. Um, you know, the part-time thing obviously is something we do. It's very uh common in the area. Uh but it's very challenging to keep bringing these people on and and guys, guys and gals keep moving around to these various different jobs. And it becomes a management headache, uh trying to keep that number of employees. Um so actually being able to be able, being able to bring down the total number of employees, both full-time and part-time, also helps start with our span of control, uh which provides for a more effective service. So thank you, Mr. President, for the time. I can uh answer any questions, obviously, if anyone has them.
Thank you, Chief. Questions on the motion, Ms. Dugan?
How many positions are we applying for here? Are we thinking we're going to get if we were to get this grant?
Oh, what I'd like to have the ability to do is to potentially do up to eight. Uh I think realistically will be in the four to six range. Uh one of the big factors is we're looking at how we stack against other entities, because this is very, very competitive. Uh we might be a little bit more successful being the mid-range, uh but it would be not to exceed eight. Um but at a minimum, at least uh four, four positions uh to get in place.
And, Aman, if you can just give us a quick um uh timeline on the grant application, because I know this, this has a very short window, so if you can just remind us of of the timeline on this project?
Sure. And and obviously, I apologize to the the council and the public here. Uh typically with with these, uh well, when we do these things, there's there's lots of planning goes into it. Uh I just literally started last Monday, so um playing a little bit of catch-up here, but I obviously don't want to lose the opportunity for the borough to take advantage of the fact that this is available. So the grant period opened on Monday, January third at eight AM, and the deadline is February fourth at five PM.
I I'm not finished asking questions. Okay, so how, so would we have to know at that time we apply for the grant, how many positions we're looking for here? Because we have to keep in mind that this is a huge thing we're putting on, like there's, if we were to get this grant and say we did it for four people, we're going to have to cover that. That is a huge tax increase after after the three-year period is over. So we need some planning on this, so we need like, I need, like, not just me, but I imagine the finance department needs to know what 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 we're doing here, because we probably put some money away to try to help with that. But, you know, we haven't even started the plan for this, so I just feel like we're jumping off here and saying, yeah, let's go get this, which would be helpful, and I'm sure we're going to need the people. But it just feels so like i- it kind of rushed in a way, because I don't think I know how many people we're looking for, and it's going to take. This is just, this is a huge expense and it immediately scares me.
Manager Crack, do you want to address some of that, or do you need to, or?
You're on camera. I'm here. She can get to me.
I I can address one thing really quick.
Sure.
And and correct me if I'm wrong. We applying doesn't mean we have to accept it either.
Right.
So it miss.
I know, but it looks bad if we apply for it, get it, and then don't accept it.
Th- this also is a year where there is no match needed. So this is something that's a little bit different than other years prior, if I'm correct. And you can, you can answer that, Aman, but um usually there is some sort of match. So with applying right now, it helps us at least start those conversations. But if we don't apply in a year that doesn't have a match, we're gonna have to bring some money to the table, and then year four, bring the entire thing. Just a thought process that we talked about internally about that. And then, again, yeah, it does, the the optics of it maybe not accepting the grant, but at least it gives you the opportunity to have those discussions later in not a rushed format. But it only gives you four weeks to apply. That's my only thought in it, because at least gives us a little bit more time to prepare through finance and police personnel.
Is this an annual window?
Uh, it is, but it's a little bit different this year. Again, I think there's more funding available than there was before, as well as there's a couple of different elements to it. And Aman, you can talk a little bit more than that, because he is a little bit more uh experienced in this safer grant. We did try for one last year. We used Vickers and we didn't get that. It's highly, highly competitive. And you have to hit that sweet spot between asking for too little versus asking for too much. So there's kind of that 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 piece where we're trying to hit that as well. And applying at least gets our name in front of the committee, so if we go to apply again, at least we're we're building that story. That also helps. So, sorry, I just wanted to give those comments. Yep.
Yeah, the one thing that to piggyback on that is is on the hiring side of Safer, there's two hundred million dollars additional uh in allocation the federal government's put forth versus last year. So the opportunity for awards is greater than in previous years. Uh so just the, that's one one point that got brought up there about the additional funds being in place.
So I know that the award is anticipated at the end of May, if I remember correctly. Um and I I imagine between now and then, should we receive an award, we'd also be able to do a calculation as to what we're currently spending on part-timers. If we were to receive the award, what we would be then spending in the future on full-timers. And um there there would be some actual savings over the course of those three years that we could budget for um those positions, I think.
Thank you so much. I'm just, what I'm trying to do is figure out, like, it just felt rushed, like.
Oh, it is.
We're doing this, and now how did that, and what does this come down to monetarily? I have no numbers in front of me, so.
Absolutely. No, I mean, eh at Aman's first meeting, his first day, he he brought this to our attention right out, right out of the box, so um it's always good to be looking for money.
So I have a question. So do we have any idea how many positions we're talking about here? I've heard four to six. Could it be two? Could it be three?
I think I heard up to eight.
Up to eight? Yeah, I mean.
I think the application is going, we're gonna, we're gonna try to, we're gonna apply for eight. That's what we should, that's what we should go for. Uh many times, the the funders will come back and say, can you do it for six, or can you do it for four? Versus if you put in for four, can you do it for three? Can you do it for two? Uh so we're gonna go in for the 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 maximum amount. Um and to everybody's point, we have the ability, once we're assuming we're awarded, we have the ability to determine whether or not we actually need eight, or whether we do four or six. So uh the best course of action is to try to find that sweet spot that uh the chief has indicated in the application process to get in front of the committee. Uh it is, as as everybody has said, it is extraordinarily competitive. Uh I believe all of Pennsylvania, and and the chief could correct me, but all of Pennsylvania averaged less than one percent of uh uh the funding that was available in in approved applications, and there were all probably could count on number uh one or two hands how many actual applications kind of got funded. Chief?
Yeah, that's absolutely correct. Uh my, where I came from at Radnor, uh the year we were awarded, uh we were one of, I believe, two or three in all Pennsylvania uh that received it. As is also stated on here, you're at least getting, you're getting our name out there in front of the peer review panel uh is important. Um you, you all spent a lot of time in this, you pardon me, arriving here last week uh with, you know, at least uh, you know, a couple of studies, uh it's going on the detail about staffing pretty heavily. Um so really, you know, it's taking a lot of the work that you all have already put into this, your blood, sweat and tears, uh trying to help with that process and keep shepherding along a lot of things that are, you're really, you're coming up, you know, soon uh or things right now that we need. Uh so, you know, hopefully, as in point out, you being able to take advantage of this now, uh will help uh with, you know, future planning, help less, at least the short term uh the financial outlier of cash.
Uh, yeah, I mean, we have a, we have a report that kind of says we have to be hiring these positions, some making this move at some point, right? I forget the name of it.
The CPSM study.
So we 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 got that, and what what did it essentially suggest in terms of the 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 professional full-time staffing? To, I mean, the approximate numbers. I don't recall. I don't, I didn't read it yet. I mean, have we gotten the final report? Yeah. So this, I mean, I think the.
It's way more than eight, but I, Gene's uh pulling it up now, but you know, the staffing recommendation was was more akin to having a a full set of platoons for twenty-four hour and coverage, yeah.
We have built far, we we build a fire station, so, I mean, it's not gonna be an empty building just with stuff, vehicles stuck in it, so I I I agree, Dana, that you know, it's the, here's, here it is, the eleventh, and we're being asked to make this kind of multi-year commitment staffing. You're right. But uh by the same token, this, this is the step, and if if you're saying the timeframe between when we apply and when we find out whether we're lucky enough to have gotten something is May, the planning that I think you're asking for us to do, Dana, can be done in that interim.
Well, and and on top of that, uh as we discussed at last week's meeting, that the intention would be for a January start date of twenty twenty-three, so um we're like, we're trying to look at full year out on on actually using those uh dollars. And I can say, uh with having, you know, been an active member of the fire department for for quite a while, every time we applied, we uh we were not awarded. So it is a a competitive grant that that we've not recently received.
I just. Mr. President, two, two thoughts came to mind. Uh one, we don't have to do anything. And two, another tax increase. I'll just leave it at that.
Uh another potential one in three years. Right.
But but we've been on a pretty good streak of tax increases over the past few years, too, so.
Last year was an outlier.
We also.
And we also know that this having full-time staff could save us on part-time staff, so it could equal out somewhat. We could also potentially save money on overtime and things like that. So that all needs to be kind of considered when we look at this.
Joining us at 8:12, give or take, Mr. Weiss is, is logged in virtually. Welcome, Brian.
I just have one quick question. So like, moving forward, if we were to kind of transition to like a hybrid model like you talked about, like, what are we, like, what do we see as like being ideal, like having in 10 years, having eight full-time and and 15 part-time, or like, I, I know volunteerism is down, and relying strictly on volunteers is probably not going to be sustainable much longer. So just kind of curious is like what our vision is, you know, somewhere in between the fully-staffed fire department and maybe a hybrid version. Is there like any thought on that, or?
So the, the end of last year, we did receive our final draft of the CPSM study, which provided an outline of how we should go forward with future structuring of the fire department. As ever since the, ever since the Phoenixville Borough had a, had a steel mill, we had a a hybrid fire department that had paid and volunteer firefighters. In the CPSM study, it lists a recommendation of three battalions with four firefighters in each battalion. So roughly between 16 and 20 full-time positions is where we're looking at in the future, when we have a fully, fully employed station. The other aspect that I think Amen can speak to, if, if he thinks I'm wrong, hiring eight of them would be difficult to find. So, you know, aiming highs is going to be good, but I think just like every other aspect of the labor market right now, trying to find qualified applicants that aren't, that are available is, is difficult. So. But we can make sure that you have access to the CPSM study. It's, it's a good read. Any other questions on the motion for the safer grant? I imagine this is also something that we can discuss at finance, or provide a bit more information before we finally approve, apply. You, I mean, we have to apply February 4, by February 4.
You have to apply February 4. Your, your motion tonight is what allows us to move it forward. Certainly, we would be providing additional information to the Finance Committee on, on January 25. But with a due date of February 4, which is before your February 8 meeting, the action needs to be taken tonight. It would be more perfunctory towards basic information as we roll this out. And I would surmise that the chief and staff will, will continue to keep both Police and Personnel, Public Safety Committee, as well as Finance Committee apprised during the, during the process and, and add to the information. But tonight's action is, is needed to authorize submission of the grant. You also are in position to, to tell us, apply for two, four, six, eight. We're, we're suggesting eight, but it's your vote.
When we discuss this at Police Personnel, we love, we moved this out of Police Personnel without a recommend, without a specific recommendation, because we're looking for staff input as to what that number should be. And, and I still think that's the, the right way to go. I don't know what number it should be, and, and that's why we hired a fire chief. So I'm comfortable deferring to, to staff on what the actual application number should be. Any other questions from council? With that, we'll call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-1, 6-1, 6-1 with.
Well, what did Brian vote?
I voted in favor.
Mr. President, I would suggest that if Mr. Weiss will be voting on that motion, that we restate the motion to ensure that he heard the motion while he was in attendance.
Sure. So since, since Mr. Weiss joined us after the motion was actually made, Beth, if you can just restate the motion.
Sure. So the motion was to authorize the submission of this staffing for adequate fire and emergency response or safer grant for additional full-time firefighters, which we did discuss in committee and was recommended.
Thanks. Sounds good. I still maintain my vote.
Okay. Okay, very good. With that, anything else from Police Personnel, Public Safety?
No, our, our next meeting will be the first Monday of February, which is the 7th, I believe.
Great. And with that, we'll move on to Mr. Moore with Parks and Rec.
Nothing to report. We had no meeting in December. Next meeting is, I believe, next Tuesday.
Great. Mr. Kirchner with Policy.
Same here. No meeting in December. Next meeting is Tuesday, January 25.
Thank you. Mr. Weiss with ITT.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Likewise, no meeting in December, no action to report at this time. The next meeting is one week from today on January 18th at 7:00 p.m.
Thank you. And finally, Ms. Dugan with Finance.
Again, there was no December meeting to report. I promised to make up for all the numbers next month.
Thank you. With that, we'll go into our second round of public participation. Any members of the public joining us tonight via Zoom? If you'd like to raise your hand digitally, members of our staff will click on you and announce your name, and you'll then be able to unmute and state your name and address and make comment to council tonight.
Mr. Ewatt, I have no hands raised at this time.
Thank you, Jen. Okay, with that, next, the next appropriate item for the agenda will be to, we'll need a motion to recess into executive session.
I'll make a motion to recess into executive session.
Second. A motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Kirchner. We'll be recessing into executive session with the expectation of coming back onto the floor to do a vote during executive session. We are anticipating discussion on real estate and personnel and litigation. With that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Good evening. It is 9:26. We are reopening our public meeting. Hopefully, everybody can hear us on the public end. If we can get a thumbs up. Okay. And with that, we do have four items coming out of executive session. What is council's pleasure? Well, hold on. I'm sorry. Can I have a motion to reopen the public meeting? We have a motion by, okay, I'm going to go with Ms. Berkeley for the motion, Mr. Kirchner for the second. Questions on the motion to reopen the meeting since we actually adjourned into, or we recessed into executive session? Seeing no questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. So our meeting is now reopened at 9:25. So, okay. So with that, Mr. Moore?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the scheduling and advertising of an ordinance, authorizing the condemnation by eminent domain of real property identified at UPI number 15-9-94 for municipal purposes.
We have a motion by Mr. Moore, second by Ms. Dugan. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. With that, I believe Ms. Berkeley has two motions.
That is correct. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the promotion of Corporal Stephen McDonald and Corporal Kyle Place to the rank of Sergeant effective February 8, 2022.
Second.
With motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Ms. Berkeley?
My second motion is to authorize the promotion of Patrol Officer Andrew Brown and Patrol Officer Anthony Duchnowski to the rank of Corporal effective February 8, 2022.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Weiss for the promotions to corporal. Questions on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Congratulations to our officers. And with that, we have a final item. Mr. Kirchner?
Yes, Mr. President, I make a motion to authorize staff and the solicitor to develop proposed terms to the Phoenixville Area School District regarding the acquisition of the kindergarten center property identified as UPI number 15-10-123E, as an echo.
Second.
With motion by Mr. Kirchner, second by Mr. Moore. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven, sorry, 6-0-1, Mr. Carmenito abstaining. Then that is, okay, that closes out our section for, under managers' reports or managers' items. The rest of staff reports are in your packets. With that, or no further action on our agenda unless, Mr. Cracker, do you have anything else? Okay, pass that down. With that, what is council's pleasure?
Mr. President, I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Kirchner, second by Mr. Moore. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Have a great night, guys.
Thank you.